Running a few minutes late. All right, we're gonna go ahead and get started. First item on tonight's work session will be a presentation by Principal Tanya Harrelson of J. Larry Newton Elementary School. Tanya, how you been?
Good, thank you, Mr. Burrell. Thank you, Mayor Sullivan and Councilwoman for having me here. I sent over my presentation. Do you all have access to that? If not, I brought copies. Okay, thank you. I first want to thank all of you and the citizens of Fairhope for voting for the Three Mill Tax referendum for 30 years. I can't stress how much that helps all of the schools here in Fairhope. J. Larry Newton last year earned an 87B on our state report card, and all of these funds were put into personnel, and this year we earned a 92A. And I'm so proud of the A we've earned. Our teachers and staff and students worked extremely hard, and the money from Three Mill funds 11 employees, and all 11 employees worked tirelessly with students. And so I just want to go through those positions. The principals have at their discretion to request how they're gonna spend this money, and for me, I just want to put that in people so that we can spend more time with students and start closing some of those gaps. So, the first person is a math coach. That math coach is able to give professional development to teachers on the spot, in addition to working with students and leading our math PLC. She also works with our STEAM knot and our literacy program. Just like we have a math coach, we have a literacy coach, and that coach too is able to go into classrooms and watch teachers teach and help them retune or find their craft and help work with individual students. Our STEAM teacher has a classroom, and all 850 kids cycle through her classroom. We have a rotation, and the kids are there. It takes two weeks to go through our rotation, but every class, every student gets to cycle through that classroom, and they're working on all things STEAM-related. And then we have an intervention teacher coordinator, and she's really working with all teachers and all students. We have a time set aside during the day for students to work in small groups with an adult, and we call it intervention time. And for some students, it is intervening where there's been a learning gap, but for other students, they're where they need to be, or they're excelling, but we need to intervene with them too and give them more challenging, rigorous work. And so, all students are able to get some intentional targeted instruction based on their individual needs. So, sometimes when we hear the word intervention, we just think of struggling students, but that's not what that means. It is for every student. And then we have a social worker. Sometimes we kind of forget, because we live in Fairhope, that there are a lot of people in need, and a lot of people need resources, everything from paying a light bill, a water bill, food, clothing, school supplies, and so our social worker works hand-in-hand with our counselors. A lot of elementary students struggle with parents maybe going through divorce, or incarceration, or suicide issues, and so our social worker is able to intervene on the spot, not just with our students, but with families and offer them some community resources. And then I have five instructional pair professionals, and all day, every day, they're pulling groups. And so, a child may be in a group of three to five students, and so they're getting extra attention in the areas of math and reading. And then we have, I have eight part-time intervention, but only one is paid for out of Three Mill, and those people are there part-time. They're retired schoolteachers that have kept up their certification, and they're too working with students to help close those gaps. The only thing I use Three Mill money for that's not for personnel is for a class membership, and it's for the administrators, and it's not tied to me or my APs. It's tied to the school. It's an institutional membership which allows us to go to professional development geared for administration. So, if I'm no longer at Newton, this membership stays with the school. It doesn't go with me. It's an institutional membership. So, in conclusion, I'm spending almost 100% of my money on personnel to work with students individually, to get them to where they need to be, and I really feel like that's a huge difference in why our school went from a B to an A. We're taking A cap this week, and I am expecting, I'm praying, for a higher A next year. So, I again want to thank all of you and the citizens of Fairhope for allowing us that luxury. I can't tell you how much it means to me, and I invited all of you last year, I want to invite you again. You are always welcome at Newton. You don't have to call and tell me you're coming, just show up. It would give me joy to show you around and let you see what these individuals and all of our staff is doing and what kids are learning. If you haven't been in an elementary school in a long time, ask Mayor Sullivan. She's there quite frequently, and she can tell you it's very different from probably what you remember when you were a child, or even when your children were in elementary school. So, again, thank you for having me, and thank you for your dedication and your support of education for students in Fairhope.
Thank you.
Ms. Harrelson, can I keep you there? Do we have questions, Council?
Yeah, I was gonna ask one question.
Sure.
I love the fact that we have the social workers. This is something that we've been trying to gain ground on. My next question and challenge is for us to have mental health, certified mental health at the schools. And I don't know, at one point, we had one that was going around, but what I would like to see, and everybody knows this, I talk about it all the time, somebody at each school, you know, for all of our kids, along with the social worker.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
So, and what that, I'm just gonna speak for me. What that means for me, I've got a budget, and I'm trying to get the best bang for my budget. And so, when I've got two counselors and a social worker, and I'm looking at their degrees and their experience and what it's gonna cost me to bring on another mental health provider, do I need that, or do I need to focus on academics? And for me, at my school, we're able to handle what we need with our social worker and our two counselors. And so, I don't need an additional person, but there may be another school in Fairhope that would, especially maybe a middle school or high school where they've got more students, maybe their problems are a little bit more intense than at the elementary level. So, I don't think that's a need at my school. Thank you, Lord.
Yeah.
But my social, I have two counselors and a social worker.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman Conyers? That's right.
You know, it doesn't sound like a big jump to go to an 87 to 92, but it's very hard to do, and those gains are really not heard of. The challenge that I'm still facing, we're working on, I think I've got a better handle on it, is chronic absenteeism. If students are absent 18 or more days, it doesn't matter if they're excused or not. So, it doesn't matter if they're in the hospital, or if they're at Walt Disney World. If they're absent, they're absent, and once they hit 18 or more, they're considered chronically absent, and that counts 15% of our state report card. And our kids don't have control over that. They're not driving themselves to school. And a lot of parents at the elementary level, if they've got multiple kids, and one of them is sick, mom just keeps everybody home because it's just easier. And so, I'm really working hard to educate our parents on the importance of coming to school. And for students, it's stressful when they come back when they've been out. They've missed assignments, they've missed teaching, they kind of feel lost, and I'm trying to convince our parents, let us do the teaching. Bring them to us, let us take care of that. You don't want to do this at home. So, anyway, we're trying to get a handle on that with different incentive programs we've got going on, and we're doing much better this year. But I think it's just getting the word out there. I think a lot of parents think if they're excused, that's what it means, it's excused, and they don't understand that for the state report card, it still counts.
Yeah.
But thank you for the compliment. I'll pass it on to our staff.
Councilman Robinson?
No, just congratulations and thank you. I had the pleasure of dealing with Principal Harrelson when she was Vice Principal Harrelson at the middle school, and she was spectacular.
Well, none of you said it. I'm sorry for speaking the obvious.
But, just great job, and we're very appreciative for all that you do, for sure.
Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Harrelson.
Thank you.
I want to say that, you know, I think going, gaining five points when you're at an 87 is a tremendous accomplishment. And I am curious, though, I mean, what's the highest score in the state? I mean, you've gotta be bumping up against the ceiling there. I mean...
Probably, I mean, 96, 97 is probably gonna be. We've got, I think, Fairhope Middle School's sitting at a 96, but I mean, I compare us to every place in the state, and for an elementary school, 95, 96 is it. I would love to see us go to a 94, 95 this year. I think I'm gonna probably gain a point with attendance. I hope I gain a point with my ESL, and if I can gain a point with achievement, I'm gonna be there. But, the credit goes to our faculty and staff. I have tasked them with teaching every day, bell to bell, targeted, intentional. At the beginning of the year, I give them a data notebook with their roster, and every student highlighted like how, where they are academically in reading and math, so they know on day one where Cory is and where he needs to go, where, what are his strengths, what are his weaknesses, who are our bubble students, and we have a plan in place, and we work that plan all year. And when kids are in school and teachers are teaching like that every day, you're gonna have growth, but we don't have time to play.
No doubt.
You just, you can't waste a day to get through the curriculum. And, for me personally as a teacher and as administrator, the key to successful classroom management is no free time, no idle time. But if you've got a class of 27, and you've got any free time, they're gonna find something to do, and normally, it's not academic. They're gonna get in trouble. So, you know, you just gotta have a good lesson plan that goes from bell to bell, and you gotta work that plan every day. It's a hard job, but it's easier than dealing with a situation later just because you didn't have a good lesson plan. So, we're on, I try to be on top of that.
So, you said, you mentioned attendance, and you said ASL?
ESL, English Second Language Learners. So, you've got our Hispanic community, and those...
Okay, so that needs a little, we can improve on that some?
That's right. And so, those kids don't know any English, their parents don't know any English, and so they're taking this test too, and that counts 5% of our score. And so, you know, I tell our teachers all the time, we're a public school, we're gonna educate everyone that comes in, so it doesn't matter if they start day one, or if their parents don't start them till January 1, they're still ours. We still have to meet those needs, and we gotta make it happen. Like, I'm not hearing any excuses.
Right. So, but we've done better with that, especially with the Three Mill tax.
We have.
Where we've able to hire more ESL or Second Language-speaking people to...
Right.
Okay, so that's a good thing.
We have, I have about 63 students that are ESL out of my 800, and we have one ESL teacher, and she pulls groups, and I've told her, you gotta speak in English the whole time, because if you're willing to speak in Spanish, you know, I don't really know that that's moving the academic needle anywhere. You've got to immerse them, and they've got to feel comfortable in doing that. And so, we're getting there, we've partnered them, and we're making that move. It's just, I mean, I just think about if I went to another country and I didn't know their language, how long it would take me, it would be tough. And so, you know, I'm showing some mercy and grace, but on the other hand, they're here, they're in our schools, and they've got to do things our way.
Thank you, Tanya.
Thank you, y'all have a great day.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, committee updates. Councilman Martin?
I don't have any.
Councilman Conyers? Yeah. Councilman Robinson?
Yeah, Historic Preservation Commission, I guess it's not a committee any longer, but we're having a little bit of an issue with our CLG status right now. We sent off all of our stuff, and we've gotten some pushback on some of the language in our ordinance, and so we're trying to work through with legal to get that set up the right way so that we can finish getting that set up, and it may be something that has to come back before the council to get reapproval with some cleaned-up language to get resubmitted.
If I may touch on that subject for a moment, Councilman Robinson, and sharing it with the other council members, and the mayor, and the mayor and I have had some recent discussions on this because of pressures, especially in our CBD as it relates to historic structures. I think that we all need to be thinking about what's next. Is there anything next for historic preservation? I think we need to start giving that some, a little more thought. You know, things are happening pretty rapidly, and we want to just make sure, we've, for instance, we, it was easier because they requested a rezoning for the property across the street, so we had them preserve, although that wasn't a very old structure, the old home over here that's now gonna be the front of a restaurant. We felt like that there was enough charm in that, that we wanted to preserve that. So, just keep, speak to the mayor, speak to Eric, speak to Hunter, and let's think, be thinking about that historic preservation. I think there's gonna be pressures on us.
Are you asking us to think about what we're considering historical is what you're talking about?
Well, I think that we may, in the next six months to a year, or even sooner, we might want to do a survey of that. There was a survey done. It's not comprehensive, but we might want a comprehensive survey of what's deemed to be historic structures, what we could do to preserve those structures, and just think about what we as legislators could do to preserve the character of the town. There's some pressures on some historic properties in the city that we need to consider.
Yeah, very good. Council President, if I may, I'll go back. I did attend the REG Board meeting.
Thank you.
I know, I was, I usually let you talk about it, but...
Yeah, I was gonna ask you to talk about that.
That's right, okay. So, I, yeah, so I'll take that. So, I did attend the REG Board meeting. We've introduced a new president, Mike Ball will be over the REG Board Committee or that we have, Recreational Board. And I know that tennis is coming along, concession is coming along. I think we have some things on the agenda tonight to kind of finish that process for the new concession stand at the REG. If you have not seen the fence and going out to baseball, all of the new fencing with the brick pillars looks really, really good, in my opinion, aesthetically, something that, you know, I think constituents in the community would be proud of. For the recreational team, Pat White and his group are doing a good job with that. But, and I think we're coming along, we're doing a lot. The feasibility study, we had that as far as, you know, the reminder about, the next thing we'll be doing is possibly looking into a master plan, you know, of what we want, which what direction we want to go with that property that we attained back in 2019. And, so, recreation is coming along. Yeah.
All right. Very good. Any other committee updates? So, I'm gonna throw this over to Councilman Conyers and Mayor Sullivan, if I may, while we're on committee updates, and I believe you have some representatives of the library, Fairhope Public Library here. There's been some, you know, we've been in the news recently, and I think that we're gonna make some comments and have some discussion, and I believe that the mayor may share some very up-to-date information with people.
And I will just add that Rob Gorley, the library director, is not able to get here until 6 o'clock, so I just wanted to, he may have some additional comments.
So, and anybody chime in that would like to, that's been privy to any of these conversations, but I did want to let everybody know that John Wall, the APLS Director or Executive Director of the APLS Board, did reach out to me Friday night, was very apologetic for the turn of events, for the way things have kind of played out. He did suggest that he would have liked to have paused the funding and then done an investigation, which is what, actually, he didn't really want to pause the funding, he just wanted to give a warning and then do an investigation. The board did vote to pause the funding, not to indefinitely take the funding away. There, and that's only the state funding, which is about $42,000. The city has additional funding, so that $42,000 definitely would not close the library down. And if, I don't want to speak for the council, but I don't think there's any desire to defund the library completely. But after talking with Mr. Wall, he did say that they, this is pending an investigation. He did say he hoped to get that taken care of this week, pretty soon, to be able to just get with the library staff, kind of go over the case that was presented, let them tell their side, and then hopefully reinstate that funding pretty quickly. He did think that there was some common ground that we can all find, and there's a resolution to this issue pretty quickly. So, he did, you know, say that, again, I mean, this is the first time that they've had to pass down this kind of finding at APLS, but he did think that we could come to a quick resolution. So, we don't expect the defunding, as people have been saying, to last very long. We think that we can, you know, working with the library staff, Mr. Wall, working with the library staff, that we can find a resolution pretty quickly.
If I may correct you just for a moment, if I understood that, there was actually no defunding.
There was not defunding. A pause, that's correct.
To have some questions answered into, for that to be looked further into.
That's correct. Yes. There was only a pause in funding, and again, we've already received two payments from the state, so we've already received half of the funding from the state, so it would only be the additional half, and there hasn't been any discussion of taking back the half that we've already received or anything like that. And again, it's just a pause in the funding until they can just do a little bit of investigation, and then hopefully that would resume pretty quickly.
And Mayor, I just want to explain to people, when we say pause, the dividends are sent out quarterly. We've gotten to, so it's not till June.
That's correct.
So, we're still, pause is really what we're already in.
That's right.
Okay, so, it's not like the money was sent and they brought it back in a pause.
No.
We're in a gap until we get that next distribution, so in that time, we will resolve the issue. I really believe that.
And they did make, the way the motion was made, if I'm correct, at APLS, was that they would immediately resume that funding, so they don't have to wait till the next board meeting, because their board meets every two months. So, they just wanted to make sure if the investigation played out the way that they thought it would, and that we could find a resolution, that they can immediately just reinstate that funding.
Yeah, no, I was fortunate enough to be on the call this afternoon with Mr. Wall when Mayor was speaking to him, and it appears that out of these three pillars of compliance that the library has to meet, two of those have been met, and that there is just some question of the location of certain questionable materials, and it appears the confusion or the issue lies in the term teen versus adult versus minor, and that's what Mr. Wall is gonna come evaluate in whether or not there are books that may just need to be relocated, or whether or not we're already in compliance. If we're in compliance, funding will resume immediately. If we're not, then the library will be presented with the opportunity to remedy the non-compliance, and then the funding would resume immediately.
And I do think that's where the confusion lies, is according, and I told him even Friday night when I talked to him, I said, I think there's been some miscommunication. I do think there needs to be some additional clarification of some terms like obscenity, like sexually explicit, but the other thing is, they're, everything that they're talking about refers to a minor in their rules. And so, a minor is anybody under the age of 18. So, when we talk about the children's section or the teen section, the teen section, again, those kids are still minors in the eyes of the law. So, that's where I think the confusion's coming in at. We might think that it's appropriate for the teen section, but according to state law, they are still minors, and it's not appropriate according to the law. So, that's where we have to get some clarification and make some adjustments, I believe.
And so, a term came up, young adult, you know, would be significant.
Right.
You know, that would put us, I think, would be good if we termed young adult, and we can look into that.
Well, and that may be where we can get with the library board and see if there's even another category that we can add for young adult, but again, that would be up to the library board. But I do think the confusion's coming in under, we may have a children's section, a teen section, and then they consider anybody under the age of 18 a minor, and we think that it may should be categorized for teenagers, but again, those teenagers to them are still minors. So, I think, I think that we can easily resolve this and get back on track. And Mr. Wall, you know, stayed committed to maintaining those lines of communication and making sure they not only talk to the library staff, but also communicate with the city as well.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, thank you very much.
Yeah. You know, I want to add, I got accused of being very angry on the radio this morning. I don't, I wouldn't turn myself very angry. I was a little perturbed, because, you know, I'm defending my city, defending the people that work for the library, and I felt that when an outside group goes to Montgomery and vilifies our library, you know, I have the right to get a little upset, because I did not feel, I did not feel that due process was performed, and I would, I would say that it's as if you go to court, you know, both sides have the opportunity to present their side of an argument. Until then, a judgment is not rendered. And I did not feel like we had an opportunity to give our side of the story, and therefore I thought it's unjust to make a determination on funding, and so, yeah, I got a little upset. But, I don't know who wouldn't get upset with that, you know? If you have someone that's, we feel unduly influencing, something that directly affects us, but anyway, it's all about due process, and then we go through due process, we need to change something to comply with state law, we'll comply with state law, is that right? It's that simple. And I think that on some of these matters, though, there can always be a difference of opinion, there's gonna always be a difference in interpreting what is proper and what may not be property. What's proper to some may not be proper to others, and there's gonna always be those disagreements, and I feel it's best to err on the side of not censoring things. I think that's the, that's the preferred side to be on, in my opinion, is that if, you know...
We've had these conversations, and I think, especially Jimmy and I, you know, there is no, so, you know, when we were coming up, council, we had parental guidance. The movies were rated, but there is no rating per se, or anybody that rates these books that sends them down with a standard stamp on them to tell you what is the age group. You know, there's some type of identification, but it's not a true rating system, you know? So, that always falls in the weeds a little bit, you know, as far as the state law, but I believe if we just stay above that 17, I think we're gonna be okay.
Well, and what I'll say is, to play not devil's advocate, but just to present sort of the other view, is, you know, when you're, when you're looking at something that's questionable, and I understand the concern with censorship, but when you're looking at whether something's appropriate or inappropriate for a certain age group, my thought would always to be, to err on the side of caution and not provide questionable material. But my, but I think what we've discussed as a whole from the beginning of this...
Parents.
Is, well, there's a, there's a process, and whether we like it or whether we agree with the process or not, there is, there is a board, and in this circumstance, it's the Alabama Public Library Service. If they come down and say, we're doing it incorrectly, ultimately, whether we like their decision or not, we have to be in compliance with it. And so, that's, that's ultimately where the buck stops, and if they come down and tell us to move books or to recategorize them, then I think we will. But, but that, that takes the guesswork out of it for the individual sitting up here, because again, like Jack said, and like Cory said, and I think Jimmy too, opinions can differ on what that threshold is. That's why it's nice to have a sort of a regulatory body that, that hopefully is consistent and that everybody is enforced or has the same rules and same, same rules enforced across the board.
Well, and Councilman Robinson, and not to get completely in the weeds, but I guess I am a little bit, but you know, there was, you know, a couple of books in particular, and in those books in particular, Mr. Wall even stated that, you know, if you take certain excerpts, they would, you know, not, they would not allow for a minor to, for that to be in the, in the minor section.
Right.
However, as he even stated, I thought he had a little hesitation, because he said, this book has won multiple awards. And as Councilman Conyers pointed out, this book is on high school summer reading programs, and I'm assuming that not all high schoolers are, especially in the summer, if they haven't graduated, they're not 18.
Well, Lord of Flies. I mean, I can go on and on about books that could be, that's what I mean. There is no real body that says, stamps something that identifies it, whether it's PG-13, PG-MA. We don't have that, and I think Jimmy brought that up, and I thought it was excellent. I think if we would do something like that possibly, I don't know what that looks like, but I agree with him. That would help a lot.
I don't have a solution for that, I'm just saying, you know, I've seen plenty times, and the comment I'd made earlier was, you know, I've seen PG-13 movies, for example, I wouldn't want my children to watch when they're growing up, and then I've seen R-rated movies that if you took one scene out, it was probably fine for them to watch, and there's so much nuance in interpretation, and, you know, I don't know how one person gets to decide what's acceptable, what's not acceptable. And, you know, I don't know how one person gets to decide what's acceptable, what's not acceptable and outside of the parent making that call.
Right.
Which is why we have the parent rules at our library, which we think are effective.
One thing I just wanted to mention, I think there has also been some miscommunication over the fact that this item was on the agenda at the APLS meeting. It was not on the agenda. It was part of public participation. So at the end of the meeting, just like we do, when they say, is there anybody else who would want to bring anything before this body? There was a Fairhood resident there who brought that before that body at that time. So it wasn't something that they could have notified the Fairhood Public Library that it was on the agenda.
So why take action?
Yeah. So again, that, I can't speak for them, but I did want people to know that it wasn't on the agenda. So when we talk about due process, there would have been no way for them to contact the library. They just said, you know, we're going to pause the funding and then we'll do an investigation. And if the investigation, if we can resolve it, then the, the funding would start again immediately. The other thing I want to do is just thank the library board, I know, and the staff. I know these kind of things weigh on them because they do a great job running our library. And they have a heart for the library and for the readers that we have in our community. It weighs on all of us. We don't like that kind of turmoil in our community. We certainly don't want to spend our day dealing with it when there's other pressing issues at the city that we can deal with every day. But I do want to thank the library board and the staff for, you know, helping navigate this and just for dealing with that on a daily basis. I appreciate them and what they do.
Mayor, I just want to point out that Rob just got here. I don't know if he wanted to, he just walked in behind you.
Hey, Rob. Yeah, and we're, and we're really interrupting his time at home with his new baby. So Rob, we apologize for that. But I think we've covered everything. Do you have anything you want to add?
I think you were covering a lot of the points I would have made just about the due process.
Yes.
We've taken a lot of time with reviewing the books since January. We've moved five books.
Come up to the, come, come up, Rob.
And, and there's still a review process. So if somebody has a book that they want to question or they want to review, they're able to do that, correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Like I was saying, we've moved five books since January. I'm waiting to hear back from the state. I've only seen what's in the news. I haven't heard anything from anyone directly about what their requirements are. And, you know, we've been wanting guidance all along to hear what is required. So.
Be in touch.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And congrats on the new baby.
Yeah, thank you, Rob. Sorry that, sorry we took off on this without you, but we, we did want to cover it. Did anybody else want to say anything in the library? If you do, come to the podium if anybody has any more.
I just wanted to say that.
Please come, come, I'm sorry, put you on the spot, but I need you on that podium. Oh, you got a, oh, you got a, okay.
You can stay seated, Ms. Anne.
Well, let me know, guys.
I just wanted to say that one of the things that we've done at the library is to require parents to come in and sign a new form and say they actually choose what level, how much of the collection at the library they can, they're talking of access to. And of the 539 parents who have filled out the form, 276 have given their child full access to the entire collection in the library. That's 51% of the parents have said, it's okay if my child checks out books in the adult section or in the youth section. So I think that that shows that the community and the parents who are using, and the children who are using the library want full access, not just to have books censored in one section and moved to another. Their child can read whatever they want to read.
And there are, just for more info, there are two other levels of access. Parents can choose up to children's, which is zero to 12, and then teen is up to 17 years old. So they can choose the lower or the middle or all access. And like she said, about 51% of parents have chosen all.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. All right. Any other comments? Anything else? Okay. All right, we'll go on and move to department head updates. And I'd ask you, if you have anything that you need to bring before the council, please do. If you have some major expenditures coming up, it may not be tonight, maybe next meeting, let us know. And while you're there at the podium, please cover your agenda items.
Good evening, council. I have several things on tonight's agenda. Number nine regarding the franchise agreement, I don't know that you guys need my help with that. I think you've pretty much covered it, but I can answer any questions if you need me to. Number 16, trying to order weather safety systems for two of our complexes. That would be Founder's Park and the soccer complex. It is budgeted and we're asking for your approval for $3,000 per year subscription cost for those systems.
Is that per, is that per subscription? Is that 6,000 or total?
No, sir, that's just one charge of 3,000 per year.
Do we have that same weather system at the golf course?
Correct.
So that 3,000 covers that as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, the, the 3,000 covers theirs, this 3,000 would cover ours.
Okay, so 6,000 a year for a subscription for that?
Right.
Total?
For golf course and us, yes, sir.
Okay.
Number 17, and I, and I realized on here, it says for a not to exceed cost of 17,500. That number is for labor only. So with the materials, we're looking at roughly 42,000.
The 15,000 would come from materials?
Correct.
Because I saw that, that was a little ambiguous on the green sheet.
It's budgeted at 48,000, so we're still under.
I saw that, yeah.
Need to modify that.
So we probably need to amend that J, don't we? Our, our, our Marcus. Yeah, the numbers.
I don't, I don't think so.
You don't think so?
Yes, the labor is 17.5.
But it's a total of 42,000.
Well, it doesn't.
With materials, yeah.
It just says not to exceed 17.5, it doesn't mention labor.
Well, no, that's for the.
It says for labor and materials.
For the installation.
But the material number is not in there, and the total number is 42.
That's where that gap fell, right?
Yes, that's, yes. But it's not written in, it's in this resolution.
Yeah, you approve and it's fine. It's fine once you approve. This is a sidewalk stuff, right?
Yeah.
I just didn't.
It looks like the way I read it, that we'd be capped at 17.5. I just want to make sure we don't.
Yeah, look at it.
30 right now?
No, 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 we're not talking about that. The actual resolution only reads 17.5, but we will be spending 15,000 more than is written in this resolution.
And because it says the quotes for labor and materials.
Right.
Yeah, but I, I think what you're saying is the M. H. McLaughlin will not exceed 17.5.
Correct.
Okay.
That, so that, their portion will not exceed 17.5. It could be less.
Okay.
Okay.
I was reading labor and materials.
Yeah, that, that does confuse it.
It's kind of.
I mean, do we, will we strike the word materials from that?
Yeah, because the materials is not priced in here because it's 15,000.
I mean, you can, we could strike, I think for clarification, request for quotes for labor.
Labor.
Asking for just the labor, right? It's all of it.
Correct.
It needs to be both.
So, and so we just add the 15 in it, right? In my opinion.
But you're only awarding this, you're awarding to McLaughlin, which is not to exceed 17.5. If you put a total of 42, or you could say total project cost shall not exceed 42, 42,000.
Correct.
Got it.
That'll cover your labor and materials.
That's it. That's it.
The city is providing the materials.
Correct. I would rather put the number.
Okay.
But I'm, I'm getting what Jack's saying is that this says, this is to award to this company, which they're not getting that extra 15.
They're only getting.
We're technically approving them getting something they're not getting.
That makes sense.
And so this is only giving them 17 for what they're doing.
And they're not getting any more than that anyways.
That's no, no.
For labor and materials, then guess what? There's no materials. So it's labor and materials, materials of which is zero.
Yeah. City's.
I think, that's why I can't think it's okay as is.
Yeah, it's just a little ambiguous. That's all. I just thought we could make it where it's no, no ambiguity at all. I understand it, but.
Number 18 is asking for a monthly cost for MediaCom. So before, they were providing us a free service essentially for cable services in our fitness room. And we have five wall-mounted TVs in there and each additional piece of equipment, whether it be a treadmill or an exerciser or stair climber, has its own screen. And we had cable television on those screens. And so now they, MediaCom has come back and said, we can no longer get the free service. And this is what they're wanting to charge us as a monthly rate. I did check before I left this afternoon. Right now, we have, the five wall-mounted TVs have no channels on them. Some of the exercise equipment still has cable. Some of them have three basic channels. So it's kind of hit or miss right now.
Counsel, I actually would prefer to pull this, or table this until our IT consultant can weigh in. He's been, he's, he's dealing with some, some personal matters and couldn't weigh in on this. And typically, when we deal with these IT, these data providers, he's, he's the expert at that. And I. It's a lot of money to provide TV service on a treadmill. I think it's, I mean, it's not a lot of money compared to a lot of items on this agenda, but we were getting this service for free.
We were.
And now they're going to start charging. It's a big jump. And, and I'd like for our IT, would you guys be terribly upset? There's no rush in this.
I don't mind that at all because I thought, I, I would like to kind of research maybe some other opportunities as well.
I do too. Streaming services on the wall and things.
I mean, I, I'm, you know, so I don't mind that at all.
Would anybody have any heartache with that?
I don't.
And Mr. Fender will be back, I mean, soon. He's dealt with some very serious issues. So do you mind, we'll pull that. Mr. White?
Yes, sir.
Is that good with Pat?
Yes, we'll do more research on our end to see what we can come up with something cheaper.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat, before you go, I just, I'd like to thank Pat and his staff. We had a fundraiser at Valana over the weekend. Pad, somebody up there, and I think I saw, did I see you up there at some?
Yeah.
To, to keep the fields clean and get them set up for each game that we had to raise money for a local family that has some health issues going on. And so I appreciate that.
Sure.
It was a fantastic event and really something special for that family. And it was great, and the fields were great. So I really appreciate that.
Happy to do it, and it looked like a lot of fun. I really liked the format that you guys did with that by not putting a travel ball team in there that can just be a ringer and.
Don't, don't think there weren't complaints that some of them were more competitive than others.
Right, right, of course.
Even, even in a charity tournament.
But it looked like a lot of fun.
Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks, Pat.
Good evening, council. Before I cover my agenda, I'm just going to discuss a couple of little updates. I do kind of want to shout out to our urban forester park ranger, Justin. If you haven't noticed, the, if you remember back in, in the end of the year, we received an offer to gift a donation to Noel Park to add an entrance at the southeast corner. That little entrance is done. It turned out really well. And y'all funded the difference between what the donation was and everything else. And if you hadn't noticed, Noel Park, every time you go by, just gets a little bit better looking. And, and that's just because of the work Justin's done. And that was a sore point with a lot of folks, that it, it had an unkept look. And I think it's moving in the right direction. And he presented a plan, and he's been following that plan. Also, if you hadn't noticed, the roundabout got started on North End Section Street. And so far, that contractor is moving at a good clip. And we hope to keep that pace and get that project done. One of the things that I'm a little bit excited about is we will be holding the pre-construction meeting for White Avenue Park Improvements, which y'all have awarded that bid a, a couple of meetings ago. And hopefully, that project will get, get done and at the beginning of the summer, be open in its new format. And we're holding the pre-construction meeting or the, the pre-project meeting for the stormwater inventory next week. And we're excited to get that, that project underway. And I just got to tell you, if you haven't snuck in and wandered around Flying Creek Nature Preserve lately, it's really starting to look and feel like a park in there. And we're just excited at how it's all coming together. And work progresses not only on the nature center, but on the, on the trails and the amenities. And we're, you know, starting to see those projects get close to, to a wrap-up stage. And I know the mayor will be talking with y'all about a, an opening, hopefully sometime in the summer of 2025. So we're excited about that. And I told the mayor this morning, I think we may have submitted the last final piece of redone paperwork on our TAP grant for the sidewalks on Fairwood and Blue Island. And I hope the next time I'm standing up here, I will tell you that we have project authorization and we're putting that out for bid. So a lot of things happening and, you know, as long as all the other projects that are going on out there. But those are all exciting projects that are moving forward.
Richard, where's the MPO project stand, the sidewalk project connecting 98 to.
Buckaroo. Actually, and I updated the mayor on this this morning. AlDOT has, has, they're, we're in our second round of comments on the drawings. And I know that Overstreet and Associates has responded to that second round. So we're, we're waiting for, hopefully, the, either they're going to come back and say there's no more comments or they need two more things or whatever. But I'm hoping that that one will be out pretty quickly too. Because it was, they had, most of the comments dealt with the, the signal equipment for the pedestrian crossing, which is, you know, kind of the traffic engineer talking to the traffic engineer kind of comments. And I think they've got all that resolved. So I'm hoping to see that get out the, out the door too pretty quickly. I have three items on the agenda that, that I can discuss. And I want to take a little time to talk about item number 12. And I know that George and I spent some time with the mayor and we, we had the opportunity to also talk with Council President Burrell. And I know that there's always a, a concern in sticker shop when we talk about a change order. But I do want to give you the quick background. When this project was scoped out for the working waterfront, that scoping was literally done about five, six years ago. And at that time, we, we were, knew that there was a, a major, major drainage outfall on South Beach Park. And if you want to kind of know where, where it actually outfalls to the bay, this is, this is a very large pipe that's at the end of the brand-new seawall that was just put in. And that pipe goes all the way up the bluff and services all of the drains that come out of Fells and South Mobile Street at that location. And the original project scope just had dealing with some end treatment where it, it, where it interfaces with the bay. Jump ahead, we, we get into construction mode and we get to talking with the contractor about resetting the end pipes and, and deal with that end treatment as part of the wall project. And as we get to looking at it, it, it's not good news. It's a multiple variety of different materials, but specifically the drainage conduit that runs from the top of the bluff to the bottom is corrugated metal and it is rusted out. And when we removed the stairwells, when we really started finding the problems, we thought the sinkholes were related to where the stairwell was. It was the pipe that was running there adjacent to it. And there was a water problem on top where there really needed to be an inlet. So unlike most change orders, this wasn't the contractor looking for more work. This is when George and I and his team evaluated, got the cameras in there, looked at it, it's like, this has got to be fixed. And so we asked the engineers, who pretty much pro bono did the plans that you see in here, to figure out what is the best way to fix this. And then we, we put it to the contractor to give us a price. To put it in perspective, we did a project about this nature of pre-COVID at the south end of North Mobile Street. And that project was a little bit shorter than this, and it was 275,000. So when George and I got the number back, we were pleasantly surprised because we were thinking it'd be 350 somewhere in that, in that range. So, you know, our comment to the mayor, as well as to Council President Burrell, is that it would be bad decision-making to not fix this while we have a contractor there. Because the worst thing I'd hate to do is a year from now, coming back to you with a $350,000 project to fix drainage that's in a completely redone park. And so that's, that's how we got to this point. It's easy to say it's the only 2.5% change order in the total overall price. But when the project's already a $10 million project, that's still a quarter million dollars a big number. But it is infrastructure that we do. But it is infrastructure that we do, it is, absolutely needs to be done. It will have to be done at some time in the future. And this is really the price and the opportunity, it's the time to do it. So we would really ask you to consider this. One thing that I got to give it to our, we have with GMC is a young man named Philip Street, who has been assigned this project. He's a, he has a degree in building science and he's kind of the project manager. He is, he is pretty tight on the numbers and he's tracking everything. There is some general belief that we are going to run under enough on this project where this will not be an additional appropriation at the end of the day. But we are not that far into this project to absolutely guarantee that. So we're at least telling you the big ugly number. But I hope that we come back when we wrap this up and say, "We were able to cover this cost in the appropriation that you've already made." So that's our goal. It's not in writing. It is one of the things that, you know, I even talked with Mr. Street this morning. He says, "I think we're good." And I said, "Well, we need to get this approved with the worst-case scenario and better to come back later and give you better news." So that's that item and I'll be glad to answer any questions about it. I know it's a big number and I hate bringing COs to you, but sometimes they have to be done. And this is one of those cases. And I think George will give me a nod that it needs to be done, so.
Mr. Johnson, speaking of all of that waterfront restoration, when do we have an estimated completion date for that?
Kind of have a two-tiered completion date. Our goal, or at least the contractor's goal, is in the center portion of the park, that area surrounding the fountain and everything to the north of there. Their goal is prior to July 4th is that is open, is usable. And the only thing would be remaining is some vertical construction to the south as well as the construction on the access to the south. And there may still be some hardscaping landscape in South Park that's not finished. So that we've made that emphasis area to get that open because we'd like to have our traditional July 4th celebration, our Independence Day celebration. And then I really believe if he can keep the pace he's at right now, because one of the toughest benchmark activities was getting that seawall in. It's now in and complete and.
All of it, is all the seawall?
Yes, yes.
South, north and south of the pier?
Oh, no, not the north. They're started on the north half of the north today.
Are you calling, going vertical, is that including the seawall or is that?
No, no, talking about we're building up.
So you would think by July 4th, they would be complete with the south seawall?
The south seawall's done.
Okay.
It's in. The ready rock wall is in. And if you hadn't seen it, it's beautiful. Go, please go down and see it. It really is a good look.
The vertical will be the restroom facility.
The restrooms and is the?
The switchback.
Switchback.
Yeah, that's what I'm referring to, the vertical. Anything from the ground level up is, and the bathroom's under construction right now. But as you know, buildings sometimes linger on a little bit, so. But as far as the centrality of the park and all the parking, their goal is to have it open and usable and landscaped and roses planted and the fountain, fountaining before we get to Independence Day.
Did you just say the fountain, fountaining?
Yes.
I like it.
With red, white and blue lights in it, so.
In front of a bunch of librarians, entheologist. You can do that, you can make a word of, that's fun. We play it all the time.
I wasn't sure what word to use, so I apologize for that.
I like it, Rick.
Entheologist, man. It's okay.
Item number 14 is an easy one. As you know, we received some planning funds from our ESP, ESPN, our ESMPO, our MPO. Too much March Madness this weekend, sorry. War Eagle. But as you, as you know, we've had a lot of traffic, pardon the pun, concerning some safety issues along the Twin Beach corridor between Greenoe Road and 13, especially considering we have schools there, a lot of sidewalks, a lot of use of that. And so y'all asked if we could direct that money to a safety study and proposal for what we can do to improve not only the function of that. It's a tough intersection with founders and Booth and Twin Beach as well as the pedestrian safety. And so Neil Schaefer has been willing to do that. And just to kind of give you an idea of what the not to exceed, the grant is for $40,000, which is an 80-20 split. So 32 is from the MPO, 8 will be on us. And so when you see the not to exceed, I can already tell you what it is because it is to complete as much of that, get all of that in the study as you can. And we definitely recommend the selection of Neil Schaefer for that corridor study.
And when is that, Richard? Are we working on, that's in progress or we're?
We've been granted the funds from the MPO. Now, we, and we had to go through an alternate process with Aldott to select, to get a pre-approval on Neil Schaefer. And now we're asking you to approve the selection of Neil Schaefer. And then hopefully, next meeting, you will approve the $40,000 so we can get this underway, so. And then finally, resolution 15, and I know y'all have, or item number 15, I know that y'all have had a lot of discussion about this. As you know, the airport has received a significant HUD grant to expand, council president Burrell, the opportunity for industrial related aviation there on the west side of the airport. As you may or may not know, and unfortunately Nicole and I have had a lot of experience, HUD is probably one of the toughest on the NEPA process. That is the environmental and cultural and all that. So we went out for a, an RFQ for the environmental assessment services. We evaluated those and y'all selected Volker and this is the not to exceed. And even though that's a big number, if you'll look at what the scope of work involved this, this is archaeological, this is cultural resources, this is environmental, it is.
It's GIS as well?
Yes, it is, it is very, HUD has a very, probably the highest standard, maybe only second closest, may be federal transit, which they got us on Arts Alley. But it's a pretty tough lift and we do recommend to award that so we can get started on hopefully using that grant to develop that area west of the airport.
That's 80-20.
Are we getting?
That HUD grant, Kim?
Nicole?
No, this is not covered in the grant. This is something we have to clear the hurdle before we can spend any of the grant money, so.
I didn't know if we could spend grant monies for that, okay? Very good.
All right, thank you, counsel.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. Quick update for y'all on human resources. In the month of March, we've got plans to hire a total of 11 employees. It'll be 25 for the year of 2025. We're also working with Public Works and Utilities, starting to prepare for the summer internship program again. So our total will be seven interns. We've got a good amount of pretty serious safety training going on, trenching, shoring and excavation training, confined space entry as well as roadside traffic flagger training for all of our crews who work in the right of way. So trying to get everybody geared up and ready to go. On the agenda tonight, we've got two resolutions. The first one is item number 20. This is one requesting for a second driver position assigned to work at the NIC Center delivering homebound meals. Our current driver is going to be leaving us April 17th. So our plan is to hopefully get someone in and trained. And then that second position would expire upon retirement of the current driver. And then 21, this is a change order for the agreement with Long's Human Resources. We are requesting to add custodian services for the NIC Center. So it would increase the not to exceed cost to $75,000. And it would authorize the treasurer to transfer $23,000 from the NIC Center salaries to the temp contract labor.
Yeah, the previous was 52, I believe, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
It didn't include the custodians.
Right. Any questions for him? Okay, hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Let me, can I ask a question? If we approve the hiring in item 20, will there be someone deleted from the funded positions after the driver retires?
It says at the bottom of that, the temporary position will expire.
Oh, I see it. There it is, right there in the last sentence. Answer my question, thank you.
Good evening. Couple of real quick things pertaining to the gas department. I guess the elephant in the room continues to be our cast iron phase two replacement. That bid will open on the 8th of April. So you will have a significant expenditure coming from the gas department meeting following that. Just want to give you a heads up on that. Also, a little bit of an update for our citizens. The gas department has completed an in-house or in the final stages of completing an in-house project to extend a gas line down Marion Beach Road that connects 98 and scenic. And also provide gas service to the residents on Marion Beach Road. It's about a 6,800-foot main extension. We needed that line to backfeed County Road 1 and scenic 98. But it'll also, and we've got a lot of residents reaching out for gas service in that area. So for that Barnwell community, extending that service was needed.
Did you say 6,800 feet?
6,800 feet, yes, sir. And that was done in-house. Also, I have agenda item number 13. A little bit of housekeeping as it pertains to regulatory compliance. Since we've signed this contract, our department has expanded and we need to expand the availability for some Regathor compliance modules for these employees. So you see there on that agenda item, we're asking for an increase of $10,080, which I have in my budget, and we'll increase that to 63,240. Any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. It says 24 additional licenses. How many employees are in your department?
So I have 20, well, so, so in my department, to answer your question, I have 25 employees. But what we do is anybody that does regulatory-based procedures, meter department, personnel that answer the phones, we're looping those employees in to cover a regulatory requirement for them because they're doing action items on our gas system. So the meter department goes out and turns a gas meter off. That's a compliance action that we have to be qualified to do. So we're pulling a significant amount of employees in that historically we haven't done. That's why, and when you do this, they open up blocks. And so you may go from, they may have a block of, you have 33 to 40 users. Well, then that next block goes up from 40 to 55. Well, the block that we're in now is 24 additional spaces. And we're going to fill all but, don't quote me on this number, but I think it's six of those 20. And that'll give us some wiggle room, hiring new employees. And that's, that's, that's why we're.
All right, that makes sense.
Sure. Anything else? Thanks.
Any questions for Wes?
Oh, one more thing I think that is noteworthy. We're going to put the I-10 steel gas line replacement on hold. We've talked about that probably for the last year. We met with Aldott's engineers the other day, talked to the mayor and let her know and just share this good news with you. I think my staff has reached an agreement or is in the process of sealing the deal to loop that replacement into the Aldott project, which will make that reimbursable and save us $600,000. So we're going to, we're going to work with them on their timeline and save us a couple of dollars. So I feel like that was good news.
Couple. Been talking to Richard Johnson too much, huh?
It's contagious.
In a good way.
Yes.
Got number 23, getting some expansion storage for our Genetek server. The Genetek server handles all the cameras for corrections and police and some cameras around the city. We have, we have three servers. One of them is about eight years old that we're going to retire. So we're going to just expand the storage on another server so we can have the capacity to keep collecting videos, surveillance. Total cost is $32,008,07.
Jeff, unbudgeted item, why now?
It, we, well, we, we had an issue with the server last year and it was, we meant to have it on the budget. I thought, I thought police was adding it and the police thought we were adding it. So we just kind of got a miscommunication.
So where's the money coming from?
It's coming from the corrections fund.
Do you have it, chief?
It's not, it's not.
We had every, yeah, we had every intention for it to be on the budget, just I miscommunicated and we didn't get it on there.
No problem, I just want to ask, I just saw it was unbudgeted and didn't see where the money was coming from. All right. Do we need to add that, Lisa, to, that it would come from the corrections budget?
It's on the green sheet.
Looking at it.
It's on the green sheet.
Well, it's.
At the very bottom.
Right below where it says zero budget.
I was looking for it on the.
Green sheet is actually white, always confused.
I was looking at the actual, it's not in the resolution though, which is, which is what we're voting on, so. I would almost say that we should say total amount not to exceed will, will come from corrections budget. Can we make that change?
I don't have a problem with it.
Somebody remind me when we get to that item. Corrections fine, we can do that. Okay, any others, Jeff?
That's, well, I had 18 on there, but Pat covered it already.
Yep, we're good, that's pulled.
Okay, thank you.
I have item number 17 and it's for software, it's for actually a budget software.
I think that's.
What item?
2022.
Is it 22? 22. Yes, it's for a budget software for this year, it's 58,50. And then we'll budget 11,700 into next year's budget.
Council president, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Kim, on this, I was a little bit, and I'm a little slow, so. Bear with me. But I was looking at the, one of the breakdowns of this particular service. It said that the initial, the 90 days, we're at 3% on the initial 5,800, whatever that number is. I'm just remembering off the top of my head. And then it says, after the initial probation, the interest rate would go up to 6% annually. So does that means we're, is that compounded? Like, that's not a good deal to me if I'm reading it correctly.
So it's a software that's going to be, I mean, as an annual basis, would go up based on a user fee. So it's not that, this is just going to be a user, user fee-based software?
It didn't read that. It just, it said after, after the 3%, that the APR would be 6% annually.
We're not financing any of that, right?
No, no, we're not financing.
So we're paying for the six-month fee.
The subscription is what I'm talking about.
Yeah, and then we're paying for the annual fee. And the annual fee is exactly double the six-month fee. So I don't think we're paying any interest. I think that's what you're getting at.
And this is.
Yeah, there's no interest payments, right?
No, and this is like, a lot of our software is a user-based fee and that has annual. And all your subscriptions, majority of our software are subscription basis.
Yeah, I get it, but when, let me find this.
It's at the very, it's on that front page where it says.
Yeah, well, I think what you may be talking about is the increase. It says initial period rate increase, 3%.
And then it says increases 6% annually. And I want to make sure that, am I reading that correctly?
Yes, you are reading that correctly.
Not the interest, it's just the contract.
It's the contract, well, that's a nice increase.
You can call it what you want to call it. I mean, I'm not, I mean, but what I'm saying is.
I'm seeing what you're seeing now.
Yeah, man.
It's a 6% increase after the initial period.
But I mean, I've been thinking of it like a lease, like you write a lease a lot of times and it'll have an annual rental escalation.
Right, it's an escalator.
So it's going to be an escalator. So once we get, we know what year, we know what this year is, it's prorated. And then October 1 starts the next year. And they've already quoted us 11,700. And then when we get into year 27.
It's going to be 12,000 and something because it's a 700, on 6% of that 11,700 is 700. Then the next. Then the next time, on the 1200, 6% of that is 1,000 and something. And then on the next one, you see what I'm saying? It's compounded. However you want to say it's not APR, you want to say it's contract. But I'm just saying there's an interest.
Yeah, there's an escalator, not interest. I'm with you.
A percentage.
But we're not financing it. And I'd say cost of a lot of things.
But we can cancel it at any moment, but over 30 years, they're going to make a rip.
Well, I mean, it depends. I mean, is there any, I mean, if you just continue to renew at that rate on that contract, then it may be. But if you renegotiate at any point in time, you could, you have the opportunity to do that as well.
We need to make sure that we know that we need to renegotiate at some point in time.
Are we only, well, this looks like it's only for a two-year term.
That's right.
So at the end of that two-year term.
To make sure.
Yeah, so you have the initial period.
But usually you know.
Then you have the 3% escalator. And at the end of that term, we would renegotiate.
Yes, and we have a C-Day clause that we can get out.
But what I'm saying is, we don't know if we're going to be here. You know, if it just keeps going and people are like, stamp it, stamp it, stamp it. It just to be known and documented that that rate is there and we need to be knowledgeable of it, that's all. You know, God is in the details.
And Kim, is this something that you use every day? Is this, how many people use this software?
This will actually be where the public will be able to get to the budget. And so we're trying to follow some ADA compliance with our website and financial data. This is something that the, that has been passed down. So our financial data.
It's a regulatory requirement, then.
It's a requirement. So this software will help us get the data. And we spend, you know, y'all know, putting the budget together is monthly, a month process, several months process. And so once y'all pass the budget, there's a lot of hours behind the scenes just putting that PDF together, making the graphs. And this is going to help us speed up some of that time. And so we'd like to really use the software. And if it doesn't work, it didn't save us time, you know, this initial one.
Will you draw us in two years that whether or not it helped you? We seem to add a lot of software every year, but I never see us divest software. Paying for a lot of software.
We're using it. Just tell you. We're using it.
We have to ask occasionally.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we pay attention to the subscriptions over the years because it could get buried and it will cost you.
But they can get lost.
That's right. They will get lost and it will cost you. And that's what they hope for, okay? Because, so I just want to make that clear.
And I have a spreadsheet, we have a spreadsheet on all these subscriptions because we have to, that's part of an audit. That is part of a requirement to decide how we book those subscriptions so that we do have a spreadsheet. If anytime y'all want to see the spreadsheet, you have all our subscriptions.
I trust you. I just want to do, I just want to make sure that we're transparent and we talk about it so it's known. That's all. That particular percentage, I thought that was a little high for me. The 3% I was fine for, then they said 6% and they increased every, it's like, wow. Okay, anyway.
And I'm not sure, I didn't see Bobby here, but there is an agenda on here for Coca-Cola. If y'all have any, have you had any questions on that? That was put out.
That's 19. You can cover that, Kim.
Yes, that was a bid at item. And it was, they were the only bidders. So we were able to negotiate that. And that's for franchise fees paying to us and for us purchasing Coke from them.
Yeah, we rejected the bids in January, right? And rebid it?
And we were able to negotiate the rates.
Okay, I'm trying to catch up with that. So I'll just ask you, I've got 100 documents to look at here. You're happy with that, the negotiated rate?
Yes, sir.
All right. A lot. Okay, anything else, Kim? All right, thank you. So we are down to, chief, we have one request, friends of Halsted for street closure on School Street. Everything's in order, the paperwork is ordered there?
Everything's done with that. And just make note that it is for two separate dates, April 11th and April 25th.
Okay, yep, okay, great.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Looks like. Hunter? I know a lot of this, we have a public hearing, so we can talk about five in the regular, in the regular city council meeting. Do you want to go over any of those final adoptions? Or 10, or 11?
Yes, thank you, Council President. Item 6, we've heard many times, so we'll go through real quick and just show where it's at before closing out. But that's a simple zoning amendment. Item 7, is annexation of the school property on section?
And I had a question. I saw in the resolution that would be annexed in at R1. Will we have to potentially reconsider rezoning that depending on what the Hope Community wants to do on that property?
Potentially, it's city-owned, so there's a lot of exemptions. But one thing we are looking at in some of our amendments is coming up with some park zoning, to be clear on what that is. So maybe something we think up.
Do we have an RA?
We do. That probably wouldn't be the appropriate. But if we ever come up with any recreational zoning districts, that might be something we look at. But otherwise.
Well, I was thinking with the gardens, residential agriculture was one thing that came to mind and.
Right. Being that that's city property, as long as, I think we have some oversight of that, but there's some exemptions of city-owned property from standard zoning as long as we're not getting any commercial uses or things like that. We might need to consider.
I can't remember. Single tax colony had nothing to do with that, right? With that area?
School board.
School board, that's right.
School board, that's right.
And there are some restrictions on the uses with the purchase agreement?
Right.
There is also a, I'll mention it now. Item 10 is an annexation ordinance for commercial property on 98. It is zoned by Baldwin County as commercial. They've chose to submit an application directly to the city clerk for a similar zoning designation. There's a sign on the property. I got it asked a couple of times at the first of the meeting. It's Casa Azul. This is, has nothing to do with a review of a restaurant. It's just the zoning for that property. This did not go through planning commission or even city staff for any formal reviews. So if there's any questions, I might defer to the next meeting. I think it does lay over for final adoption.
Were there any self-imposed restrictions on that, Hunter?
There was not on B1. We typically don't like conditions on things. There is a, you know, part of the logic here of coming straight to you, there's already been public hearings in the county for the commercial use. We'll be looking at a little bit, we had some conversation with our other attorney this afternoon. We'll be looking at some of the uses as Baldwin County, as it's zoned in Baldwin County, which is very much commercial. We do in B1 allow a couple of residential uses such as mixed use and townhomes. So we may come with a, just to get as similar use as possible, may come with some restrictions on that proposed.
Do we need to talk about that before it's introduced tonight?
I don't think so. I think you have the authority to do that. I don't have that answer for you tonight. So in any case, if you want to table it or if you want to, we can maybe answer that before the final adoption.
How was, how did that hearing go with the county? Do you have any information on that? That's one of those things that if they're not communicating, maybe they are communicating it, but do you have any?
I don't. I'm not exactly sure when that happened. That may have happened, I don't know if that was a standalone or when that property was zoned, if they received that designation when they rezoned all the properties within that district. I can find out and certainly do a little research and see if that was a standalone zoning or just a, you know, request at the time of the whole district's being zoned. And we also have a site plan review, item 11. I'll go in that in detail during the agenda. That's here, it's in the CBD and a project that has a single office space and two residential units. And I believe that's all on the agenda. I do want to mention and maybe something to consider if you talk to Mr. Fender. It's kind of a question I've been asking. MediaCom does have a franchise agreement. That's for cable. As far as I know, that's only for cable. They also provide internet and phone service. So I believe that should be a higher rate. So maybe something that Mr. Fender would like to consider if they need a different franchise agreement that we're currently working under.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I see that.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Let's see. We've got about, we can cover number eight. I can cover that if we need to. That's just the final adoption of the parking authority. We've talked about that. Just to come back in compliance with the legislative act that created the parking authority. Did I miss any? Let's see. Item number five is a public hearing, so we'll talk about that during the meeting. Okay, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting[1789.19]